Our second items, the public health team grant contract. That came over and went over this with us. Mr. Bailey, you've reviewed this?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
It's routine. We get these from time to time. There's unusual that.
Great. So I'll move to approve the, can you get back here? The, this cocoon, is it, the cocoon grant as presented, total positive impact of $4,454.
I'll second it. It's been moved in segment to approve the, this year 2017, 18. Cocoon ran in the amount of $4,454. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, our American Tower lease agreement, for action or consideration. Mr. Berman, please.
Good morning.
Morning.
Morning, yeah?
Morning.
I went and got a folder then, because we go of the American Tower. He sent me a monthly rent term schedule to kind of give us an idea of what we're looking at if we go with the 75. This is, what he sent us is based on the 75,000. Now, we're in a, I'm going to propose, I think that'd be the best way to go. Because if you look at the numbers that he sent us, it looks like we're going to make quite a bit of money in the long run by, by this schedule.
No, that sounds good. We, I see we, the monthly amount changed slightly in the schedule, and it's back to 2018 to, I mean, up until then is the six something.
Right, yes.
Up until 2018. Starting in 2019, we get our first, you know, month to 746, 40 a month. Which I'm sure no one's done the math, and it's probably not important right now, but it is a good thing.
Yeah, somebody has done the math.
Because what, because what I researched is, our original, our original agreement was a 30-year agreement. It was the first five years, and then after that was five, I can say this five, because every five years, we renew it for five times.
Right.
So that makes it a 30-year contract. So that's where the confusion was on the dates.
Yeah.
Because I thought it was a 20-year at first, but it's actually a 30-year agreement to start with.
Yeah.
So it pushes it out to 40 years.
Yeah, basically going from a 30-year agreement to a 40-year agreement.
So, so the value of signing this agreement immediately is $75,000 above and beyond close to monthly rent.
Correct.
Increase this.
And, so.
I don't think, Mr. Bailey's probably got the most up-to-date copy, but you.
Well, this is an amendment to an existing agreement that we had, so the, the fundamental elements of the lease don't really change. I think we're really talking about the, the duration of the options of renewal. It's not, technically not a 40-year lease. It's, it could go up to 40 years, depending on how many times the five years is renewed.
Right.
And then about the, the change in the actual rental payments.
Well, and Dave worked on this when they asked for that extension. They wanted that amendment to it. And they were pretty low on the upfront one-time overpayment. We did get that changed, the 75,000, which is going to be very helpful.
So, so Mr. Bailey, as I read through this amendment to the lease agreement, there's a provision for them to get out the lease with 60 days' notice, but there's really nothing for us to get out with the lease.
Well, I don't have the original lease in front of me, so.
Unless they, unless they're bringing it here, unless it's material, I have to find it here again.
Material default.
Yeah, material default. So that, that's just a question to you, the comfort zone for us to be, lease amendment or a lease where there's no way out. Second question would be under number seven. I think I can answer this myself, under confidentiality. Oh, you got it there.
I have your message here.
Your question. I, it's just, everything's supposed to be confidential, but it says, or if otherwise required by law. Am I safe where we're doing this in a public meeting, it's required by law for everything to be public?
Right. Well, we can't really have any confidential law agreement.
I just want to make sure.
On your other question, about termination, we're already protected. If they don't carry out their obligations under the lease, then we can terminate that. That's a material breach. What the termination allows for them is to tell us essentially economically, we can't do this anymore, so we have to stop. Now, if they were to stop doing anything on their own, then we could have, as a result of breach.
So, all the legal side of it comfortable with?
Yes.
Just to correct my statement yesterday, the financial impact of this, not, not including up until the year 2019, but the financial impact is a million dollars, a million dollars, 6,000, $1,600,000, with the 75,000 and with months of payments. So substantially more than my statement yesterday. So I wanted to correct that statement, because it, it would be out there in public. So anyways, very good job, Dave, on negotiating this. Legal counsel sees no problems with it. I'll move to accept the American Tower, the amendment lease as presented.
I'll second it. Excuse me. It's been moved in segment to accept the amendment, amendment to the lease agreement with American Tower as presented. Any other discussion? Any of you in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Very good work on that.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks for putting out the following questions. Okay. Mr. Collins?
Mr. Collins here.
Oh.
He was.
He was.
He was. I think he down under the chair. No, he left his notes also. He's coming back.
Do the minutes real fast.
Yep.
We have two, six minutes, 14th and 15th of February. Move to approve as submitted.
Second, it's been moved in segment to approve the minute, meeting minutes of February 14th and 15th as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We're going to move to Kevin for our CHC oil RFP.
Good morning.
Good morning.
For the upcoming construction season, our dues were requested from Idaho Asphalt Supply and from Albina. Low bidder, or low quote was Idaho Asphalt at 362 per ton, which is $70 less than the date last year. And the total is, because of the quantities, we, we claimed to do 371,170 dollars. That, that also includes CMS2 oil, which we utilize for making EAC, which will finish the water users, water user line project. So those are all included. Albina Asphalt does not provide CMS2.
That's, that's great.
So, my standard question, you'll get used to, is the freight is different, but it comes out in the cost of the oil. Freight's a little bit more.
Yeah, that's, the freight is more from, from Idaho. I, in, in planning, identified with the vendors exactly how many tons or how many gallons we're going to each location. And there's different freight for Idaho to bring to either Lakeview or Christmas Valley, but the overall cost is 70, uh, 76, $56 less.
So it's quite a savings.
Oh, yeah. So we could actually award it to Idaho and then have Albina ship it coming from.
Was that a motion? What's he all good Kevin really is?
I don't know if they'd go for that.
Yeah.
So, so you're making a recommendation to?
Recommendation to go with Idaho Asphalt Supply, because of the, because of the cost, but also because of the historical efficiency and quality that we've gotten from Idaho.
Well, I don't think we should lose, because we've always been pretty happy with our prices, and we shouldn't lose what you just said there. This is $70, kind of cheaper.
Yep. Yep, it's, it's, it's better, certainly than what we got last year.
So I'll move to accept the bid from Idaho Asphalt, with the numbers reflect, I'm not going to repeat all of them, reflect the numbers at the end of bid.
I'll second it. It's been moved in segment to accept the Idaho Asphalt bid. Total cost is going to be 371,170, and the breakdown is included in the bid. This was an add-on, Mr. Bailey, and you know, you just got it in front of you, and I know.
Well, yeah, but it's, it complies with our bidding requirements, so it's just a question of deciding which one you want to award it to, and ask Kevin's explanation, so.
And my discussion, Kevin, they've done this together.
Right, yeah.
Right.
Just, just one minute. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you. Let's, Mr. Collins, before you.
Sorry.
Good to be here.
Okay, so we discussed several things yesterday. First up is the handbook. I've made a change to the comp, comp time policy.
Is that always gone, because I know people, no, it's my.
Yeah.
Okay.
For comp time policy, basically adding language that allows us to, the union contract, the policy we have for comp time, it sunsets, which is June 30th, unless we renew that. So this gives us the ability to delete or amend this policy according to the union contract.
The union contract sunsets in June 30th?
This verb.
Just, just this one provision.
Oh.
One, that's a provision.
Yeah.
That's what I'm here.
Okay.
All right. Is that language acceptable to you?
It was to me.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think it gets, done what we want done. So we still have, as open issues, overtime and the smoking policy in the handbook. Still haven't got an answer from this attorney that disagrees with, I'm still getting conflicting advice, so we may want to talk, discuss that in terms of union negotiations in executive session. So I'll leave that alone for now. With the smoking, you know, I had proposed a smoke-free workplace, which in essence makes this entire campus and all county properties smoke-free. Employees as well as visitors can't smoke on, on the property. Is that what we want to do? And in addition to that question, I'm trying to follow up and find out if, if tobacco use on equipment or around, see, the wording in the law is, or I think it's law, is Lake County prohibits smoking in or around Lake County vehicles and equipment or machinery. I'm sure that is law. I don't know about tobacco, so I'm following up on that. Just want to clarify that in this. Because we're not, we're not talking about tobacco products here, but I think it might be part of the Oregon law. So I'm going to need some more time on that.
Okay.
So I will bring this again next time we meet, and we'll get these three things worked out before that. Is that acceptable?
Okay.
Jay, I don't think that, you know, we're talking about it, might be, might not be bad, have another work session with the department heads and other elected officials to go over the changes and explanation before you bring it back to the board of commissioners, too, if, if that would be valued. I, I believe the department heads would see some value in putting some explanations in some of that.
Okay.
I really do.
I think you're right.
Okay. Salary steps. I've given a, I've given you a proposal, a proposed policy as well as those steps, the way they're break down. I'm proposing we accept this as our policy in handling exempt managers' compensation. There's one, one position that's not included on here, and the reason it's not is because the fairgrounds manager was not an exempt position when LZPI did this study, and so we're going to have to do our own study. We're going to have to work on that.
Needs to be.
So it's going to take, it's going to take some time. I've already sent requests to the other, to our comparable counties. I'm just waiting for the, the results to come back. So I would, I would like to go ahead and implement this, noting that one position will need to be added when we get the study done.
And just for the record, you had communication with Commissioner Kestner that's not here, and he was okay with?
Yes.
With this? Not that he can vote on it, just a document that. Questions?
No, I, I did get this this morning, and I looked at the old one before it was all split out, the way Jay answered it, and I like the way he said it. I think this is, this is.
So maybe one clarification. We had some discussion this morning on landfill and road superintendent.
So I just put that out.
So, okay, just as long as we have that appropriate document in front of us, that, that would reflect.
That reflects just the road superintendent salary.
Okay. Will we have one for the landfill? And, yeah, you just haven't got that one put together yet.
I, I have the numbers. I didn't, been a grad, so.
And grad, okay. That, that makes it visually easier to understand and to manage whoever is managing, in my, my view, so. You're all quiet this morning, Mr. Chair.
No.
I'll move to accept the step process, exempt managers' compensation as presented with, it'll be added on the fairgrounds and the other, the landfill will be added as, they're already there, they're just not on the graph yet. They're in the process. And, and this, to clarify, this establishes a step system for exempt managers' positions, it's setting policy.
I'll second it. It's been moved in segment to accept the exempt managers' compensation document as presented with the knowledge that we will be adding the fairgrounds manager as well as the landfill manager positions here in the near future to this document. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Follow-up question, our handbook will take care of the vacation part of our exempt employees also.
Already has.
Or is that what it's part of?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
For, just comment, I've been wanting to get here for years. This is where the county should be. This is the way it should be operating, operating the, the rural region, everything in the front. Evaluations are being formed and everything. I, I'm very happy with the work that we've done on this. Thank you for bringing that forward.
Thanks. Okay, agent of record, you asked me for a recommendation. I think, I, I know we can perform those duties in-house. I know we can do it. It would be some work, so I think it would be useful to, no matter what we do, I think we need to separate workers' comp from property liability. Not all agents are able to, to do that. Workers' comp, I can't write that business direct, let's say, if we write that business directly, let's say, they provide us what basically, in essence, an in-house agent to help us with the process. If we have an agent, we don't put out that person, they expect the agent to do it. In my opinion, that person that they have, that they would assign us, would do a better job of it.
Well, Jay explained, Jay explained to me yesterday, regardless of who, if we were hiring other agents similar to Jim Hobbie, regardless of who we hire and what their skills and abilities are, they pretty much interact with you, even though sometimes it has to go around the horn to get to you.
Yeah.
So it's just, it's removing that step and that confusion and.
Okay, so as far as the work, or the property liability, I know we can do that work also, but I think we should put out an RFP for, for the property liability side of it. See what we get. There is, there is a number there that it would be, I'm looking at the number we have right now, and I'm thinking, that's not worth it. We can do these duties in-house, but there is a number where that would be worth it, to have a, a third party represent us and interact with the insurance company itself, with the trust. So, once we get those RFPs back, we can evaluate at that time. Is, what we're getting for this money, is this going to be worth it, or should we keep that in-house?
And basically, that, that is option four, that Commissioner Chau pointed out yesterday, do the state comp. And was one of the, yeah, three options, is sort of the fourth one came, like.
Well, Dan and I had a conversation yesterday and didn't have the time to get there this morning on this issue, sorry. What, what you and I have discussed was keeping it in-house.
On a trial basis.
On a trial basis. So that's another option.
Mine is the same.
Yeah.
Have the workers' comp.
The workers' comp, just, we rewrite that direct no matter what. With the property liability pieces, we've got two options. We don't renew right now. We don't renew July 1st. We give it a three-month trial period, see how that's going. They'll give us a six-month period of time to evaluate. I would ask Great Basin for feedback. But we're just going to start going through the renewal work right now. I'd ask them to document, you know, what is, what is it you're doing for us? How much time are you putting in? So we'd have some information there to work with, as well as give us three months of time to evaluate and see how this is working.
Well, where I'm at, and I had a conversation with Jay this morning, is I, I like the state comp part of it, because we actually end up pretty much with an agent of record by taking it on ourselves, not us being the agent of record, but they, they help. The other, I would like to do an RFP to find out what our options are out there, what kind of dollars people would want to charge us for that. Just knowing the workload that we continue to put on departments and the amount of time it can take. We're sitting here today, we're very fortunate, Jay has some background in insurance. Not everybody has a background in insurance. So we would be sort of taking it on with somebody that's in-house that has some experience. Does that set us up if Jay decides to walk off?
Well, after his performance evaluation, you know, bets are off, so, yeah, that's.
But, but we can go out for an RFP. We don't have to accept any. We don't have to accept the lowest, but we can find out what the pool is out there and, and give a little bit of time and, and find out what the pool is. Think about doing the trial for, for three months. Give it a little bit more time, but that, that's where I'm actually.
Well, I, I was, I was pretty much there yesterday until I talked to Jay in the plane that I have a concern about, and I, I know he's going to be visiting Nikki, just to kind of verify this, but when he mentioned the double up, that where they have the knowledge of our properties and the changes, but they have found cases where properties have been doubled up through an agent that doesn't have familiarity, even though they've been an agent for us for a long time. That's what, what my concern.
That's the one area we.
Kind of jumped up a little bit.
We can improve things in that area by doing that in-house, maintaining the property schedules, and that's a lot of. Well, we could do a better job of that.
I think the things that you caught about it, that we should be up and everything's taken care of at this point, so that's a non-issue if it's all taken care of.
Well.
Well, it should be.
That's a correct statement.
Yeah.
So I'm going to, I'm going to maybe refocus just a little on this. What is your recommendation?
I think it would be valuable to, to find out, no matter what we want to do, no matter what. We need to know what it would cost. We need to, we need some proposals, I think, to be able to evaluate. Is that worth it? At some number, it is worth it.
I think we have to make a motion, we can give direction by consensus for him to go out for it, because you want it, a motion you can.
That's why.
But I got, I, I spent private time talking, because it's not, I'm, I'm not an insurance expert by no means. And as a matter of fact, I don't even like how we're, that pays so much for insurance all the time, and all, everything associated with it, including the agent of record.
Well, your, your, your earlier comment is exactly the way we try to do things. We have a position that's willing and has the background, but that position does not require the person to have those skills. So you're exactly right. As much as we know Jay's going to be here forever, we're building into a job, into a position. You are, something that we're not requiring.
I hope he's going to be here forever, but it looks like he's been pulling his hair out to me.
Yeah, that's true.
So I, I would like to, I would like to at least do the RFP to find out the value and be able to compare that to what we think of our, our, our time and our value, our time.
And the RFP not including the same.
Right. Yes, I'm fine with that. That's, I'll get her.
Give that a shot, and bring back, we evaluate it from there, and it may go exactly the direction we were talking. We may do it in-house or we may not, but give us some time to review and think about it a little more.
Yeah, so we're already middle of March. I can have this ready, I don't know, I am so, I'm busy right now, but middle of next week, maybe.
So why would you take out more duties if you're so busy today? My case in point, I'm sorry, we, we overburden a lot of our departments.
So anyway, I will, I'll get that. How long do you want that to be out for?
Two weeks should be.
I think so, too. Should be fairly straightforward proposal process. Okay, we can get that.
Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you.
You're going to stick around, aren't you?
Yeah.
Did you have anything else fell under this?
Nope.
He needs to stick around for legal updates.
Yeah.
He needs to. Oh.
Are you going, is the nuisance, you said it lays on a piece, but before you go there, Jennifer joined us. I was just going to see if we had any.
She's here first.
From the nuisance, I, I, she was, I didn't know she was here. Did, did you want to move on to that?
Yeah.
So just to give a little bit of leads, I must say, the subcommittee met on, after we had our two hearings on our nuisance amendment to our nuisance ordinance. Mr. Bailey joined us online. He's part of the subcommittee, I would consider him. We had a lot of discussion. And so as the nuisance amendments are written, we're very comfortable with it. We're very comfortable with the way it's set, even with the, the testimony and everything. The question that I brought forward from the testimony was the pill process. And the total consensus of the subcommittee, as we talked with Mr. Bailey, to have him explain the pill process and the direction that we move the recommendation to the board of commissioners will, should go. Jennifer, Jay, did I miss anything there? We talked about Porta Pot, part of that, we're comfortable with that at this point, and we couldn't find anything in there. And we couldn't find anything in there.
We were comfortable with the noise because that was talked about.
The noise, there's, you know, the, as far as the decibels and all that, I believe through, I know within, within the industrial and commercial side of it, there's standards that you have to meet. We, we felt it is okay to live with the way it is. But we're also willing to hear if you have a suggestion on that particular part of it.
I, I don't have a decibel, but without having the amendment in front of me, I know the concern was, is the, how do you distinguish between somebody out in the agricultural area versus somebody downtown Christmas Valley?
Agriculture is exempt.
Right, but I'm just kind of repeating what they were saying, that, you know, the neighborhoods in the neighborhoods that are adjacent to, in this case, Wally Park and the summer concerts and all those types of things. I, I didn't have an answer for them that day, so...
You know, and I guess what I would say as we're trying, as we're hiring, putting a nuisance abatement person on and everything, our goal is to address the extreme cases much more than average cases. Somebody that's unhappy with their neighbor. Not that I'm belittling that, that I don't see the noise issue being our main.
I don't.
So with that, we were pretty comfortable with it. The thing about it can be amended at any time.
Well, that's the other point, is as we proceed, if we were to adopt this amendment and we find that it has some holes in it through whoever it is we hire and they're trying to enforce it, it would be fairly straightforward to come back and do another amendment.
Does that cover it? Guys? And then, Mr. Bailey, I never printed off, but you, your email to all of us, but you probably have that for, if you'd like to respond to the pill side of it.
Actually, I don't have a copy with me because I sent it to you. But...
Do you want me to get a copy?
Well, no, I can summarize what, what we're talking about. The concern, well, we had a lot of, we had a lot of comment when we were at Christmas Valley. Most of it didn't really apply because folks were complaining about things that were actually addressed by the amendment itself, or they were complaining about nuisance, the concept of nuisance in general. But one of the gentlemen, Mr. Kuhn, according to my notes, pointed out that the way the amendment is written, the board or its agent would be the body that reviewed and made a decision on the initial complaint. And his concern was that any appeal of that decision would essentially be an appeal back to the board, which had already made a decision. And he said, so you're not like, his concern was you're not likely to get a true appeal because the board would be reviewing its own decision. And so what I proposed was, since we are now going to have a nuisance abatement officer, that we simply clarify that portion by stating that now that we have that person or that one, we do have that person since we anticipate bringing them on, that that person will do the initial review and make a decision. And then a party can appeal their decision that a nuisance exists to the board. So the clarification that we, that I'm recommending that we pass is something that clarifies that we will separate those two. Under the ordinance as it is right now, it's the board or its agent. The clarification will make it, we are going to have the agent, which is the nuisance abatement officer, make that decision. And then the board will sit as the reviewing body and not be part of the initial decision.
So unlike what we've done in the past for that nuisance individual, which was our planning director, brought it to the board and asked for, asked us whether or not we wanted to go ahead and start that process? That won't happen?
Well, it was, the previous one was a bit more of an informal process in the sense that the agent for the county would look at everything and then come to the board with a recommendation based on their investigation. What we're doing now is it's not really going to be so much recommendations. They're going to actually decide, I have determined there is a nuisance. And then if someone says, I disagree with that, the property owner says, no, I don't think this is a nuisance, then they could appeal that to the board. So you would wait until someone disagreed with that before you were involved.
And that's a 10-day period from the time that they get notified.
They are notified, they have 10 days to really...
So that's the initial notice, that's not, once the cleanup starts or anything. So if they get a notice, written notice, that they have a nuisance, they have 10 days to appeal. They don't appeal, then that can be brought to the board of commissioners to review and...
One of the appeal is they have 10 days to bring the appeal to the board.
Yeah, but if they don't appeal, because it's going to take much longer than 10 days to get to the very end, it could be brought to the commissioners and do it.
Well, the only thing they're appealing is the decision that a nuisance exists. They're not really appealing what has to be done to correct the nuisance. That could be part of what they would bring to you initially. They could say, I don't think it's a, I don't believe it's a nuisance, plus the plan to address it if there is a nuisance exceeds my ability to, or, you know, is in excess of. So they could do that, do both of those, but then if they do it, it's a 10-day period.
And it was the unanimous consensus of the subcommittee to push it on with the term of recommendation of the pill process to be laid out as it says.
And the critical thing here is, just to underline the point, is that we now have somebody who would be doing this as their position on an ongoing basis, as opposed to someone who would do it really on an ad hoc basis.
That has direct supervision by a department head.
Correct.
They will rely on that department head and you as legal counsel, as nuisances are brought forward.
That's correct.
And I think that's incredibly, especially nearly on, incredibly key component of this because, you know, everyone struggles with what is and isn't and being able to decide where it just demonstrates that. So we want to get on the right foot. Appreciate the work you did, Ruth.
So, so if we as the board accept that recommendation, I didn't believe that it would be, I don't know if it'd be appropriate to go ahead and accept amended ordinance as amended or make sure and notify it that we're going to have an official decision at our next board meeting. Because there's a lot of public interest in this.
Sure. You had the two public meetings, three to public comment. You could have made a decision on the amendment at the conclusion of last meeting that we had in the Christmas Valley. You can do it today, you can wait and do it in a later date. Those are all your options. Choose what you like.
So today was a hearing, isn't bringing forward the recommendation from the subcommittee.
Right, you've already done the hearing.
Yeah. Amend amendment.
And if I remember right, we didn't say we were going to continue the hearing process, we closed the hearing process.
We just advertised today. It's just not advertised on our agenda today.
Right. Yeah. And so I'm competitive, carry it on for all three commissioners to be here and for it to be on our agenda, not as an addition or just a follower. Just, just because it is a pretty sensitive issue. So that's sort of our recommendation.
It's the wise course, I think.
I think that's a good idea.
So carry it on for decision, our next, possible decision of our next meeting.
Do you want that on the Tuesday or Wednesday? Do you want a discussion on Tuesday or anything, or just on Wednesday?
I, I think we have plenty of discussion.
I think we should just put it on Wednesday, Mr. Bailey will be present.
No blame at all on Jim.
Do you join us, you can explain things.
And once again, I've got to say to subcommittee, all my thanks to them. They're very, very good. You don't just make decisions without researching and thinking about it. It's been, thank everybody that's done that, all of you. Including legal counsel.
I can say because we've had a couple of different examples today and yesterday that we're dealing with from our employee handbook and a lot of the personnel things that had been hanging there for quite a while. And Jay's been working diligently on in the committee that he put together, Commissioner, which includes everyone that's present, Mr. Bailey and Jennifer and Jay, Denise, Greg, Darwin. My appreciation couldn't be greater because for 10 years, we've been talking about this and you took the bull by the horns as a group and you dealt with it. So, thank you.
Well, thank them, I think they all have ownership in it.
Yep. Do you have ownership?
They do.
Okay.
Like they told Jennifer, isn't this fun?
It's still not over.
Well, that's a blast half empty.
Denise wants to go. So just, just sort of a follow-up, we have a lot of applications. There will be ones that qualify, there will be interviews sometime within the next week. Probably next week sometime. So we're getting there. Thank you, everybody.
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, did we have any legal updates for opening session?
No, just what we, just currently dealt with.
Okay.
We have two for each opening session.
Okay, and you didn't have anything else that I missed here, did you? Okay, we'll be going into executive session at 11, or excuse me, at 10:43 under 1:00.